Especially in the city that I asked. It's like, I don't know, there you go. It's in all the one. We're not anxious to say it. He's a big, he's a lot, he's always telling me, he's been on the ground checking for these.
Oh.
Let me go.
I don't know what she says, but.
He always tells me, he always tells me.
I think I'll make two.
Three years as well.
He's going to come.
Yeah, I'm sure of it. He goes like this.
He's always depending.
He's spending. He's burning both his cars.
All right.
I'm not over there.
Yeah, but I do.
My one.
Okay. The one that was. It was just the one that was. Thank you. It is the, the cause is the fire department. I got it. Okay.
Well, I've got it. But I mean, the only thing is, yeah, if they're.
Right.
Get the one.
And then.
Some place they have, getting you dropped.
And you know.
A whole lot of time. Can that sort of do?
Um. And you know. Business license, let him know. I would just do, uh, license for my new shoe. Okay. What I'm going to do on my, your answer.
Oh, it's. So.
Friday night, we still, they, uh, you know what? They're at least five. The two things that's not spreading. But.
Uh, there was some time maybe.
Not a.
I'm doing again, so I don't.
Oh, wait, wait, that's, I'm seventy-three, last year. Looking at the person. So. I mean, well, I got forty-three.
Getting a tax, you know? Yeah, so it's, it's, so. If you have.
Yeah, I mean, we come up. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm saying, I mean, there's, there's all the, after all, my name would be.
I mean, it's not.
It's all spring birds or language in the bird. Right. No, it's. Very much. I don't see her in spring. Actually, yeah. At the guy home and it generally got him. Uh, inside.
Tell them. I thought. I'm interested in what.
I mean, all of them.
Such a great sign. Type of.
That was the egg, the egg six. Uh, I mean, for some reason, I know you got it. You're trying to tell me. These, uh. Did you draw on the stuff? Yeah. Debbie, Tom, before something, there's something. There was. I tried to, don't want to find that.
Bring the.
That wasn't. Don't be on that. I was like, make. No, this is less. I'm ready to try. That will give. I'm off. It's. Oh, no, it's good. There's everything I had on Farmer's. Oh, my. Some of this is why I feel so good. I would. You may lose on my desk. Sure. And we're going to show them.
All right, you can pray. Probably small.
I have. I'm saying things. But I use it especially. So maybe we'll grab.
Who wins it?
I don't understand it. I don't want to, or you'll be a cop. But I don't know where I'm going with it. I'm probably. Let me stop along. That's awesome. Where is that?
It was in the middle of y'all's, where you're putting your, in the parking lot. Like, here's my motor.
Oh.
That's one of those coasters, she was driving from electric. That's a whole. Yeah. Oh, I like to do that. Thanks, Dale. So I would like to follow, blank at Dale, set me up for failure.
I think some bigger man.
You don't have to sign here to reach our. Oh. You don't do that to me. We did some things.
Okay, I can wait.
There's no, I mean. Well, it's weird. I mean, I'm nervous about when you think you learn that's in there. Yeah.
Well, I'm going to.
What was it? What you're.
I'll just put me in. Still.
I just got the. I'm done. Got it after work.
How many people see?
You go. Thank Donald's having a thank thing to not do. You got one. I don't think. If you have any questions, I'll just come up and give me.
I don't think we have any time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good. I just get that right now. That's my door. You know, it's hard to. I'm already began.
Off, off.
Um. Oh. Oh. I can read it. Why? Have you made space definitely for? This is very public, for which it stands. One nation under God, in beautiful, integrated justice. Very holy discipline.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time to come forth and, and be servants now and for you, but for our community. And we thank you for your direction in our movements and your direction in our affairs. We ask you to be with us today, tomorrow, and days ahead. Would you stand up for it? Amen.
Thank you. Uh, well, tell you what. Commissioner Meadows, Mayor Jones here. Commissioner Coger.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Perry.
Here.
And attorneys Joe and Zach.
Joe, Zach.
I was born. President Joe will be here in a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any public concerns?
Sign in.
Sign in. Please. Like. There's no one. Ms. Bond, don't you want to come on up?
Oh, okay. Y'all have to excuse me. This is the first time I've been from Dunn, so I'm like, um, I'm from the Stamp and Grounds Community Church, honey. Ms. Bond, this is Burton. I live down towards mine, there's Phil on two twenty-seven here. Um, we have, um, a couple of different community things going on right now. And I'm just wanting to maybe leave you all some flyers. Um, the main one that, we, we've got our Halloween party coming up on the twenty-fifth of this month. And then I've got, we've also got, um, uh, we've got, I've got flyer. It's got three different things that we've got going on, um, all the way from October into December. Main thing that I'm really here for is that, um, we're, we're having our community Christmas toy giveaway, which we did last year, I think, on the day that y'all had the parade and everything. But we sort of talked about it and we couldn't, it's sort of hard for us to get everything prepared and still have our own Christmas stuff going on. So we moved it up till December, the, um, um, sixth. And we're going to be having, um, the, um, it's a Christmas toy giveaway from December the sixth from two to four. And, um, I was basically just wanting to ask if you all have friends, family, or somebody that you work with or something. We're asking for, um, um, I'll pass these flyers around to you all. We're basically just asking for like, um, if you have gently used toys or new toys, we have a list on the back of it. Dale, I think you probably got one in the mail.
I understand.
Okay.
My crossword, thank you.
Yeah. And just that even look, we, uh, last year, we had a really good turnout, um, for this. Um, what we do is try to really support our community here, um, to serve the, uh, kids and the families that are in need. We did, we, back in July, we had our, um, community closing giveaway and it was the best we've had in three years. Last year was the first year we did the toy giveaway and it really went over good too. Um, like I say, we, um, gave away a lot of stuff, so we're starting pretty well on new again. And, um, that's, you know, if you can, you got, I want to say you got friends, family, if somebody you work with that would like to make donations. My number is on the back. I'm always like at the same, I can give my number or, you know, through the church or something like that. So that's basically it. Um, can I put my flyers, will you all, or in the window, or do you all?
Well, that's a fun with that. I don't.
Okay. I'll leave those with the show so she can put them up for me near. And snap, you're next. Really, that's all.
Yeah.
And I thank you all for your time. It's a pleasure to link you all and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Here.
And all the.
Yep.
And, uh, we also have Hannah from KLC here.
Hi, everyone. I'm Hannah Lyndon. I'm with Kentucky League of Cities. Uh, this month is City Government Month, if you all weren't aware. So the Kentucky League of Cities is traveling all around the state and visiting, uh, each of our member cities and ones that aren't members, just to say thank you for your service to city government. Uh, as a thank you, I have a couple of things. I have a plaque that you all can put up that says you're a member of KLC. It's very fancy. It looks like this. And then I also have a little thing from Mayor Jones. So. This is for your guys. But. And then I'm gonna leave you all also, um, with a couple of like celebration ideas in case you all wanted to do anything with your social media for City, City Government Month. Uh, and yeah, my main purpose was just to be here to say thank you. And if you have any ideas for trainings that your city needs at all, feel free to contact me. Um, it's H L I M D O N at KLC.org and I'm on the training team. So. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
I'll leave this.
Have a question, Hannah.
Yeah.
Um, how would somebody go about if they've got enough hours now to be taking certain levels of certification? Who do we need contact for this?
You can contact me.
Okay.
Yeah, I can check your level at any time. So, yeah, just email me.
Thank you.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Really short to see.
Anybody that has fans, so we probably want to. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
See you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to send, I got. I just wanted to update on butt loadings. Um. Oh. It went really great. I think we had the most vendors that we'd ever had this year. Um, every once in a while, they had a really great time. I did just want to clarify it over like on the record because I received an inquiry from Central Office of just making sure that the alcohol stayed out. The park and was not on school grounds because they did call and ask if we, if we had alcohol on school grounds. So I just wanted to clarify that, no, that, that, that seemed to go really well across the street there too. Uh, we received a lot of positive feedback about both events. So, uh, I look forward to hopefully doing it all again this year.
Thank you. Everybody's having a good minute. Yes. While you're working on that. That came in the mail. Like just.
For a lot of minutes.
Yeah. But I don't want to waste your money.
That was good with everything. I wanted the money out to make them.
I was going to say, um, John.
I'm using it. My better.
Are we doing all five minutes at the same time?
All the way in the morning to leave.
No.
All the way in the morning to stay, so they can do. I've got one more.
There's any run that came out of this agreement tonight? All right, Zach.
What?
Can we approve them all at the same time if they need to be individually?
Um, yeah, I'll do that for your problem. Get some change.
I feel like if everybody is a hundred percent agree.
I think he said he's got change.
Billy. I wasn't part of September twenty-nine, so I have to, I approve that one. But everything else approved it.
On the July twenty-second one, um, second page, under streets to take Mayor Proton, Commissioner Dale Perry up and put Commissioner Brown.
The twenty-seventh?
Yeah. Under the streets where she gave her board, she got relisted as Mayor Proton.
Wasn't that the one where?
Oh, it's different one. So, no, so, no, she was sworn in because since she reported that she was sworn in, like, yeah, the law.
Yeah.
But she gets a report under, under that one.
So these, these two, uh, there's Tanya's on the sixth.
Yeah, they're saying on August, or August is that way too?
And then the August twenty-sixth, um, Board of Adjustment and Planning Team. Big Tanya's, I'd say, M O R R O W. You got Mayor, so anywhere her name is, just, and then the other one, you have her name listed, we're sworn in. It's Moro, M O R R O W, not M A R R O W.
M O R R O W?
Hmm.
That's right. On this one, I'll be your, uh, pay appointment.
Um, now on page under twenty-sixth one, if you look down the third page, it says M A R R O W. Mayor of.
On the Board of Appointing Folks.
Look at the next one down.
Oh, S D A. In the motion.
Oh.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the, you know, it's in the motions. I want to make sure it's headed right down. And they're swearing in on the eleventh that these being, you know.
Uh, yeah.
And then the last, except to the twenty-ninth, it still has the Mayor Proton, Dale Perry, instead of Commissioner Brown in streets.
The finger one.
I made it on the two.
Uh.
Listen, I made it on the two.
Yeah. I was saying, you need to miss. We did it. I assume.
Put your hands. Yeah.
I'm doing a big question.
Oh, okay. Please. I mean, just spoke, you know, I. Anything else on the minute? Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Uh, you, I can make a motion to approve with the changes that Dale said.
Second.
Well, actually, if you do them in, um, all together, I can't vote on a couple of them. Yeah, that's something I wouldn't hear, yeah.
Which two do you want to take out?
If there's one that people were absent, we can't.
Okay, let's just do them individually.
Yeah.
Again, you want to change yours to July twenty?
Just start at the top. Which we don't have consent calendar number.
You want me to motion to approve July twenty-second?
Sure.
With the change of my name on streets from Mayor Proton?
I see.
All those in favor? Was there any change in one of fourteen?
That's the same thing.
Sorry, Brian.
Want to make a better?
It, this, this one's not the one that has American or Mar, Marla, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, motion to approve August fourteen minutes with the change of, uh, Mayor Proton to show my. For streets.
Second. And second. All those in favor? Yes. Uh, twenty-sixth.
Oh, motion.
Second.
The three.
This is the one that needs to, to reflect.
Yeah, well, it's. I'm not.
I have a second. I'm second. All those in favor? And September eleventh.
And I refuse because I can't stand that way to hear it all, but.
Oh, motion. I'll say.
All those in favor? Find a stay on the left hand. And September twenty-one. If you was out of this one, was on the cap.
What are you supporting that?
Um, with the change, motion, or you motion.
I have a loss over.
Nobody's motion.
A motion with the change under.
Second. I'll say. All those in favor? Department reports, Police Department.
Talk about the, uh, the Exxon tank our camera system that was brought up since the last meeting. Uh, if I got any questions, not bad. Like the, the cost was going to be two eighty-three ninety a month. It's on a five-year contract, but that's, uh, hundred eighty, very few from the front. Also got an LPR that's integrated with it. And also comes with a rear-facing passenger, rear compartment camera that's low light and no light. Uh, broken. Um. Just feel like that's an increase in transparency, officer safety, a lot of different things. And that makes things better. But that's just for the one vehicle. Um, within the next five years, if we do hire a second officer, uh, we can have them installed in that vehicle for the same price. They all hold their price for that five-year contract. So. Think that would be a big plus. Also, uh. It is for Commissioner Perry, the copy of some policy service, but it's twenty-sixth call, or I believe it's twenty-nine call. The month of September, uh, had. So it's pretty low listening. Traffic stop speeding and slow down. Oh, no.
Awesome.
That's your folder that gave me last time.
All fiction, yes. Um. Outside of that, I still haven't heard about the, uh, reimbursement check for Homeland Security. They were having some kind of issue with their payroll system or something. We shouldn't have gotten that. It's because of, so they are. Some having, I believe.
Was that the state home lane or?
Definitely our.
Oh, sure.
It's not.
I still love it.
We should get that anytime. And outside of that, I think that's pretty much it.
And Chief did check in that question I had about the Exxon, and it didn't decrease our, uh, insurance.
No, it's right. Very, we're covered as much as we can be right now with having body cameras. So it's not going to increase that.
Well, how does your budget reflect if we were to pass that? I mean, you think that you could manage that?
Yeah, I think there's any issue with that at all. I'm having another officer. I think.
Did you contact them at all? Because I know that in the last meeting, I stated, you know, if it wasn't a five-year, I would be more, we're tied potentially three permission. Or could be different people.
I'm supposed to have a meeting with him as in maybe in the morning after this session, so.
I mean, I, I, I don't know about you guys.
I, I like.
I just wish it wasn't five years.
It's one thing to commit to next commission, but like you said, commit commission after that to something that's, yeah.
Potentially take a mission.
So I'll check with them tomorrow and see if they can do the few three years or two years or the.
I'd say two to three.
Two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I mean, if you don't like it, you've been a horse for five years. Let's go to Dr. P. I, I love saying you can. The problem. So it's good.
Pretty sure it, it would be useful. Especially with the things we've had with the, uh, the LPR cameras that we have, if you've got one that's moving all the time.
I think it's a great thing. Like I, I've talked to you there. I think it's good for the security of your work and theirs, and that helps still be all right.
Right. And it's, it's, if you're on a traffic stop, especially when you're as tall as I am, when I walk up to a car, what you see on body cam is the top of the car. And I see the person or anything like that. If you don't see any interactions, it's mainly a voice recorder, if I can better way to. So with this on a traffic stop, plus you pull up in front of somebody's house and you walk up to the house, it's video tape and what's actually going. It seems.
Have you?
Oh, I've got them in the body.
I would say at least a year, yeah. Of course.
If you have a problem, I'll take care of it. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, probably.
So month, month of.
Yeah, true.
For the month of September, we had seven runs of, we had in our house, four training classes. Total three hundred, three point five training hours for all of four departments. Uh, we had four members take external classes like state fire stools and things like that out, not offered within Stamp and Grounds for a total of seventy-two hours. Um, for our first quarter, fiscal year quarter, we made nine runs in the city, thirteen runs in the county. And, um, I've got all the details, if you want the details of what the run types were. The.
I'll remove it.
No. No, you're safe.
You got your work set up in the firehouse?
No, I've got it set up in my desk. Uh, that was nice. Yeah, we did make it to, uh, the chili cook-off. It was a lot of fun. We really enjoyed that. Uh, we had the station staff most of the day, uh, just in case we were needed. Two apparatus, they can cook off, just to let everybody touch it up. We had a great time.
Yeah, I really appreciate you all coming out.
We had a great.
We're glad you enjoyed it.
Oh, wait, you know, do I feel like it for it or?
No, yeah.
You have a fan back there.
You have to take it up in the way.
She won't imagine.
No, she did not, actually. She had no part of it. I told her, don't even pass by the stove and touch it.
She's certainly lost that.
Absolutely.
I understand.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Public works.
Um, so. Start with the bricks program or up to four thousand and seventy-five and dominated breaks. Um, our goal for the patio is to get to about ten thousand. That's what the patio in with the labor. Um, uh, any additional outside of that will go to other things for the, uh, one that's very hard. Um, talking about the park, I've been in contact with Martin and Sanitation more times than I wish. Um, they are having a problem locating ADA compliant porta-bodies and, or at least used ones. Uh, they will not issue new porta-bodies to a park, uh, because of the, uh, change that it can be damaged or vandalized or whatever. Um, so she's supposed to be back and that would be sometime early this, or late this week or early this week to tell me what they find. But, um, I've kind of changed it a little bit. Uh, I think, uh, since the ADA compliant porta-bodies cost more money, uh, and we really don't use them all that much down there. I think we could just go to one. Uh, and then just keep the one out here ADA compliant as well. And then, uh, that should be good for that. Um. Got one other thing that I forgot, so. I'll leave it in the office right now and then I'll remember it and I'll interrupt.
I'm, I'm public works because it's a building and buildings long public works, but we're, I wouldn't hear from you, but you all talked about redoing the basement downstairs for around a cost of eighteen hundred dollars. Yeah, I have nothing back on stuff I turned in to try and fix that. Are you okay if I get somebody and give us an estimate of what that would cost and we can look at that? And that's been, like Cody said, put a wall here, get rid of that and try to make rooms, store, uh, valve storage in there. Because I haven't heard anything back on the other, and I don't think it would be eighteen hundred dollars to do that, that wall. Yeah, I'll try to get somebody to come and give you an estimate for the next meeting.
Wait, you're talking about, what's the eighteen hundred? Where are you getting?
Um, it was in those. That just.
I believe that that was eighteen hundred though, was about to have this get upstairs.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I thought you were talking about up here, sorry.
No, 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 I was saying since, since you're, since you're approved to do that downstairs, it's really a way for all, all through Home Depot, Lowe's and, uh, A or lumber, I remember. Many of them.
They don't want to maul there to anything. Interesting. No.
But while there's a commission willing to do that, I'd like to keep moving on then. Let me get estimate first and see if it's crazy then fill out R T or. Or at least you don't want to. I think eventually we should do R P on it, but that way it tells what we expect from people. So I like that whole vein of putting those out.
I uh spoke with Darren today and he is going to come out sometime. Next week, I think um. We're gonna start moving forward with painting. He did. I think he's gonna check into about getting paint, see if they can get it or if we need to. Um, but they will paint the sidewalk and I showed him where all of the street signs are. So within the next couple of weeks, the street sign should be going up. And I'm still waiting on my vendors to come in and I'm still waiting on the um black pole holders to be. They're gonna like really. I'm excited. I came.
He's kind of busy right now.
I know I I saw that. I actually uh that's given a message and told him congratulations. Well, so. I spoke with the the Hamilton National guy and he is supposed to be coming out and at some point he told me he was gonna check out. And I told him about Springview and I also told him that there was a call received on the corner of Elm and um Birch. About a foothold there. He says he's gonna look into both of those if it's something that he can just repair without having to add on. Do what he quoted us, he'll do it. If not, he'll give me what. And if we need to, we can go that route, but if not, I'll use him. He hasn't told me yet. He said he's coming out to to look at it. Okay, you said he's gonna come look at it because he said he's kind of busy. Um, so he wants to know he. Not hundred percent positive that he can get it done by the end of this year.
Also spoke to Darren this afternoon about the signs and where. A lot of our stop signs are not the O T's lines are not in the right height. As far as the enforcement uh issue, I've seen D U Is get dismissed. The almost the stop sign is not at the current or the proper uh height on the street sign or the street post. Uh, just different things like that. So we really need to address all of our stop signs. Like through there.
Makes a good journey when I actually measure it and be like.
I talked to Safety Co and Safety Co said I think that it's supposed to be like six feet from the bottom of the stop sign to the ground and. None of them are that.
You have three posts.
I have like eight new view channels, but it's not enough to replace all of them. And not, I mean, all none of our stop signs are reflective either. So there's that. Um, I did whenever I talked to Darren today, I said that that might have to be something that I bring up. Either when we redo the budget to see if I can budget for that or if I can talk to Safety Co and it's a small enough amount to replace our stop signs. And buy posts to replace, I can start looking into that to do it. Uh, I mean, it just. Whenever I first started this, I didn't.
Said the same thing, but at the same time, that could be an issue.
Um, I actually too, I took this up. The we had the DJ that was down there. Um. Sergeant a hundred and fifty four while he was there and I was gonna see if we should reimburse him or pay him for that from funds. Let's see.
So a hundred and fifty and higher?
Uh-uh, just a hundred and fifty dollars.
So we're gonna pay for the emissions on the rest of it and I paid the full.
I'm I I paid uh.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
Cause I know you paid.
I didn't have him write me an invoice for three hundred because I honestly. It only kind of discussed asking for a hundred and fifty. So, I mean, if you all want to reimburse me too, you can.
It's a city event. Doesn't ask for it, but it's under a certain amount. I would say C three. Uh, I make motion that we cover the E J for. Really good call that happened last year. October fourth.
Bottom out.
Three hundred uh, a hundred and fifty and go back to reimbursement.
Three hundred again? But two different two different motions. I'll second votes on the fifth.
Well, so you want to do a hundred fifteen, a hundred fifty or you just want to do three? Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so a hundred fifty two maybe can be reimbursed. For the uh PJ. And then we'll have a motion on that. I'll make I'll make that uh my second. All in favor? Again, we'll do a motion for a hundred fifty dollars to pay the DJ. Uh, do you know the name?
Michael.
Brandon.
Brandon.
Brandon. Hundred fifty dollars motion to him to pay for the game for the city of it.
It's B R A U N M.
R A M. B R A U N M.
A hundred fifty dollars. I'll say. Thank you, by the way.
I'm glad that you admitted as well as I did. I was a lot of fun and I would love to do another one soon.
So I got a lot of moving parts, a lot of it's on the agenda. So I don't kind of legal stand. We don't want to ask about retail. So we'll uh we'll hit it off right here. Um, just to clear up the rivers online. People asking, the river is not open. They have not given a date yet. They're working through it. It's gone. That's all we keep saying. He's saying it every week. That's fine. Um, they've got stuff they've got to. Jump through some hoops, but it had nothing to do with the city whatsoever that I'm aware of. Um, second thing is, and I want to thank Shell, um, I know. It's it might be a little bit behind, but I appreciate you. We're already sending the letter that Joe had drafted out back in. June uh to put out basically the warnings to everybody that has. Had past business license or they are operating now that we know those A K. Establishments in stamping ground. We're gonna send a reminder and she has about thirty of them here, so.
Seventy three.
Seventy three, I'm sorry. And uh, also wanted to make sure that the postage comes out of the economy. Yeah, I'm sure it's it's under a certain. Like we're up to forty two businesses right now that are currently. Paid up in stamping ground. I've not heard nothing from Scott Hall in the revenue cabinets. Uh, we're still awaiting their decision. Haven't heard anything on the road either, but I have not asked this before. There's some other things we'll talk about later on, but uh, that all I have.
Uh, I've seen him walk through the door. Uh, he was reviewing the contract for some. Have you had?
It's on the it's on the list. It's on the table.
I don't actually have a report.
And with that, at the last meeting, um, we want Sid to reach out to. I had ours. I did reach out to him. Wait, you're back on the end. Uh, with that, can I ask you all? Cause I'm sure she's gonna say, what do you, oh, we wanted to present, what else do you want on the website? You want to be able to basically also be featured, right?
Yeah, I think they wanted to be. User friendly.
Easy to read.
More than WordPress.
Or is it?
Bring it up on your phone and be able to function.
Be able to edit on your phone?
No, function the website because it's it's pretty, let's just say you want to enter chat five orders. It's it's next to impossible, so.
Oh, yeah, I forgot.
That is just so. And and Ken talks about the language of the website. I would like to see it.
Well, that's the thing. It doesn't have a programming language. It's like WordPress. You go in and you get a text box. You type into it, you get it and it's done.
Just how it's laid out. Basically, it's uh old way that they used to do websites, right? And maybe they can add a different. First one that we need to adapt to.
Maybe I can see if um when you get a TV down here that day and we pulled up a mobile broadcast from phones, you you all can show her what you're talking about. Cause I have no problem.
Megan all uh has, I think she's mentioned this twice to me now. She says the TV is she can do it. I don't know if we want it.
You want my TV? Yeah, you should be able to.
User friendly, pay the fees and things online too, like the A C H or.
Uh, there's a there's a whole list. I would, you know, John.
Go and give me the list. I mean, she can't be prepared to come present the changes.
Yeah, it's it's pretty. Well, right now it's a change.
I guess yeah, just everybody email me their things. I'll forward those on to her and.
I I have the whole list. It's basically um. When Civic Boss presented to us, they kind of came up with uh what a government website should be. And so that's the list. So it's uh. Then they recreate the same thing for.
The only reason we called it that is we contacted them was their policy. Or about their policy.
That's there.
Five thousand start and now I'm not sure.
Think you're no. In the minute, three six four or something.
Yeah, forty. Yeah, cause there was um, there was an initial kind of setup.
Yeah, that's not my idea. Yeah, I'm not talking about the year. Yeah, I was talking about the initial setup. Yeah, that's what he was done from there.
But now they're they're gonna have done um. Uh, five years of.
That's probably true. It's probably.
So you'll be able to go back five years of all the meeting minutes. Uh, all of the. And they do it pretty quickly. Adelaide list.
Did I ask him?
No, he asked about it.
And I forgot it being on my mind until I seen Joe come in.
Joe confused us so.
Joe, I know you just got here.
Yes, sir.
But um, I know why you're on vacation. I reached out to you. This has been our first meeting since we. And that discussion uh being emailed about a certain business not being legal. In the city limits. Um, have you gave any thought to? Uh, the process of what we need to do moving forward? Being A K, do we need to have a hearing regarding this?
Yeah, I'm not sure I remember exactly.
We have a business that is. Basically doing business that is under another business. Basically supposedly, I'm not getting into the whole of that side of things, but uh. When you look these businesses up, this is kind of what I have always, you know, when I look up, not pick on Ken, but I look up in the hands. They're registered with the state. Always, but they're registered as an inhabitants um with the state, even at the local courthouse. And that's something that he has done. This business does not meet those requirements. But we have in the city allowed that license to exist. We have already issued them a license. So when you read the ordinance from the way that I have been. Y'all are more welcome to research upon this. We can have a conversation later on. Um, it says that we potentially need to have a hearing regarding this.
We've issued a license to business. If that entity. Conducting the business in the city or is it different?
In the city.
So is it restricted business under our ordinance saying it can't exist in our city?
Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things, um, even, so you get back to talking about, we should. Probably even be able to look and see if there are a registered business to begin with, which we failed to do uh on that guidelines.
With the Secretary of State's office.
With the Secretary of State's office. Um, when you look this particular business up, they're out of like Cincinnati or Covington or something up that way. And they do not even have a. Um, the name is not even registered down here or any state way to form. And it's a problem because, you know, we we're allowing that business, but yet they're not meeting requirements that we have set forth. In our offices and. Yeah, I I asked you to look into this. I know what you had told me and I don't know if that was necessarily the best device that I could have done is actually talk to that person. Because I'm not trying to. Have that problem with that business.
The problem is we've already issued a business license.
And that's where the hearing comes in, I believe.
Well, that means we did something to license.
That doesn't mean it's okay, Joe.
Well, we've issued the license.
We can revoke it.
Well, I don't know that we can.
That's where the hearing comes in.
Well, here so we're on. So here's one thing that you even pointed out months ago. This business is gonna have the defense. We don't even follow our ordinance. You know, we're not supposed to issue an ordinance when a license when it comes to the door. You know, you pointed that out and we saw it. We're supposed to look into it, make sure it's a reputable business, make sure it's reputable people, but we don't even follow that part of our ordinance. So that's a good defense for that business to go well.
So if they relocate, it's voided anyway because your business license is only issued for the address. So, there you go.
So if she if they're not doing the business anywhere, well, I don't know if it.
I don't think we have anything said you have to update your.
Well, that's that's that. That would be no different to me. You would have to re-register your health. Wherever you're doing business. So Rob, so traveling electrician, he has to say, okay, this is my main spot, but I travel through here. You know, that's why you have a business license.
Actually, the only thing they had to have updated is a registered agent because they could move their business and not update their secretary of state as long as they have a registered agent. That they can be filed upon. That's what's required.
Well, what gets scary is the taxes is why I'm bringing this up.
What taxes? We don't charge occupation.
Exactly, but Scott County's not giving it.
That's up to them. We don't. Yeah, Scott County and Georgetown deal with their own taxes. I'm sure Ken pays taxes.
Look into, be the way.
I mean, you got to share who it is so I can look into it.
Uh, we can't. I don't want to publicly do it because we may be in that in the realm where you are correct. We've issued this license and done it wrong, but also we just, I think we all need to brush up on that. Because it's something that we need to look into is what I'm trying to say. I've been, you know, you're not wrong, three months, four months, five months, and I'm trying to do things about it with other people up in Scott with revenue and everything else. And I'm trying to do this the best I can. It's not gonna happen overnight. We all know that. But long story short is I think we all need to brush up a little bit on that and then. I don't know if we even need to go on an executive session so that we can have discussion, but whatever it is.
Um, probably, you know.
You know, in the next.
Points about if we should have a hearing if you find out something like that in the future or if we can revoke. Because if we if you're lucky enough to get us, we can have where they can automatically file there, we're gonna have this issue. Somebody's gonna go there or go online, automatically get a business license and we might be stuck.
Cause they check to see if they're a legal business. And then if they did not pay, then they come after you because you say, well, enhances doing work in stamping ground. Pick on Ken Ken again.
And I guess um what what makes them legal business? You're saying because they're registered secretary of state?
They're not registered at all.
I mean, you don't have to register yourself as out of the city, correct?
And individuals can do business without registering.
Yes, I don't give a shit.
At least that.
But they don't have to.
You have to register with the Secretary of State if you're in LLC.
Yes.
And you want the protection of the Secretary of State.
Otherwise, you could just say it's a COVID medical. Had to be registered with the state.
If you're doing business under and assuming you have to register at the courthouse at the D V A or corporate ownership. Am I wrong?
I don't think you have to. If you're operating as a business, all you have to have is.
Let's look into it. How about that? I know you roll vacation. That's kind of like Roy and Michael. Let's, can we? I know you're on vacation, that's kind of like road back up, let's, can we review it, email whatever we need to do? We can tag everybody, it doesn't matter, uh.
But on those grounds, I agree with you a hundred percent, every business that gets a license, they should be insured. Um they should have workers comp for their employees, they should have all these little things that all of us business owners typically do. Uh in order to get their license and that can be asked for and proven.
I I'm just sitting there thinking, when I go to a city, I'm not asking some questions.
No.
I'm not asking approved insurance.
Not.
How many employees are down, like, it's like you go to Richmond, it's like here, you go to Richmond, pay five hundred bucks, you work there all year.
Yeah. Return at the end of the year. Madison, Scott County, they're they're.
At the end of the day, Joe, that's in our best interest, that's what we'll go with, I'm just asking, can we please look back into that?
Sure. Less than I have to do of all that.
Yeah, up north I have to do. That's all I got. To read to the reference.
Anybody look at the September finances?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Um first one, Michelle, I don't. Kathy, you might be able to answer this, but Michelle might know the specifics of that, very first thing, is that the uh the fifty fifty grant for the TIC? Um says that.
Thermal grant?
Yeah, is that where we pay, had to pay half of it? The thirty two fifty?
Yeah, that was the, the thirty two fifty is what we got back from them, that's the other half. Cause they reimbursed.
We paid for it whole and then they reimbursed their half. And then on the check detail. Um first page, second line from the bottom, repenalized for some IRS issue?
So that's a fifty one dollar?
Yeah, cause it says it was, the tax period was two months before we got the notice, or that sounds like a tax issue.
There was something I had, I got a letter in from the IRS and I had to sit and tell us that and talk to her about it and basically. It sounds like, cause I had to send it to quit books too, and it sounds like essentially the automatic thing with quit books didn't automatically withdraw the taxes that it was supposed to. So that was just to correct that.
There's a, my business one, is it just a. It's conditional amount, fifty four dollars.
Which one's in?
Uh thirteen four seven, it's on the second page on the backside, this says time painted, and then it's definitely decided fifty four seven.
Oh, that's, that's a automatic transaction for the uh.
That machine better, yeah.
What is that going to be resolved?
Um I dropped the ball, did you get a chance to read all this, I hadn't had a chance to read it, Michelle, I think sent me a few contracts yesterday or the.
I'm hoping I got on the.
And Michelle, Michelle has been talking to some of them, and some of it sounds like we've got to write the contract out, correct?
Yeah, pity those, I, it sounds like we're stuck with it for a minute. What's a minute? Uh what was it, two, five years?
I don't remember under.
Right, it was five years total.
Yeah, I don't remember. One of those forty eight months, oh, yeah. But I don't think that was pity those, I think that was like the.
Cause I was thinking pity those was upwards of, what, nine hundred dollars to get out of it?
It was a buyout, you had to pay the remainder and plus something on top of it. And I think this goes back to what you you were saying about the policing, you know, a lot of these contracts we're dealing with. We need to suppress on our commission and future extensions, don't sign anything, box us in and no way out, I mean.
Well, we need to know too, like if it's a nine hundred dollar buyout, how much are we gonna be paying?
In the end.
In the end, anyway. I mean, maybe that's worth it, cause. I wonder what we had.
I don't know, I don't know, last administration.
So, I think it was just the last commission.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna say at least two years, because all that was here before I got here.
I know when Madge Jones and I were on, uh the mayor at that time wanted to buy that type of coffee, and we spoke against it because it was a lot of print costs and everything. So I know in our commission, three, two terms ago, we voted it down, so it had to be last commission, it was why I. And for the reason we're seeing it, it's expensive.
I mean, we, we got a lot, he said he talked about it in the project that we have. I guess. So we pay that, to have that program? I don't know, it's a nice, is that what that's not doing? So why isn't them, like boots? They'll feed everything. He's like astronomical.
Yeah, right.
I know that's how we get paid, but. I was just asking. Uh I mean, I'm open to approve September first through thirtieth. Financial statements.
I'll second, others in favor? It is gonna be closed tomorrow. Um the thirteenth, which is Monday, they'll be closed at two? Yeah, I'll probably have to leave for eight, I think. Okay, and then you got something about this PBA meeting on here, and I'm still not clear. So when I talked to Tony at PBA, it is not something that's required, but he just expressed how he likes to make sure that everybody in the county that deals with property taxes. Is together understands that this is your piece of the puzzle, you know, so it's basically to make sure that everybody's on the same page before they get into the.
Is that a door there or online?
Uh, thank you.
Clearance office.
It's the twenty second and at ten, I think, I mean, and it's not far, so I mean.
And what's tomorrow's vote?
Uh to a vacation day.
Oh, I've enjoyed it, you earned it.
I think she's, obviously, it's actually just kind of worth helping you. That's why I was just taking that to announce it right here.
Make an announcement, should say close the vacation, because so people know, if you're down here working without, you don't have to take any time.
Um. On which one?
I was gonna say, I don't know why we'd have to motion on it, if we don't even really need.
The only thing that's, it's okay, she's going, it's okay with the city also, when you shut down there, that kind of period. I don't want, that's why I was asking. Administration, administration's okay with it.
So tenth and thirteenth for this vacation?
Yes.
Except for the thirteenth, it won't be closed all day, it's not. Do we need her to go on the twenty second?
Now that we.
We uh.
There might be a. There might be a way to zoom in, I'm not sure. I can ask if you all prefer each state.
There's a line.
It'll be a Wednesday.
Eat probably after lunch.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
It starts at ten. So I should be done by eleven, I should be able to get here by eleven thirty four.
You should get one.
Oh, yeah, I I've got to start.
You can close your, like me and Mary Jones have offered, I can come down here on the twenty second, I have easy on my calendar, I can't. As I come to pay something back, I can say, if you have a check, I can put it in this drawer, but at least somebody be here to answer questions and not have to shut it, cause we've shut down a lot. If y'all want that option, if not, just.
Any else?
Good, I'm gonna go to other deal.
Uh West Banko CD. That's actually two different things, by the way, I figured it'd be hard to discuss people's bank as well. Yes.
Yeah, we put that off as Ken went here.
And what we heard the last one.
Want to do the CD first?
Well, if if the CD only is only valid, we do need to give a bank. So we should probably discuss banking, and if that's the case, then West Banko transfer anything.
Alright.
Well. Yes, yeah, cause if not, we need to put a community trust, get out of West Bank area.
Something, one of them. What are the things we talked about?
Um.
How you feel about?
How you feel about it, what do you think?
Ready to go?
Ready to go?
And they came down here, April maybe, and talked to me and uh. They brought the whole category, there was the guy that does this bank, there was the um business guy. Their big things were, where we're getting nickel and dime by having so many accounts, the current bank is charging us per account, instead of we just get basically free. And they're like, we don't do that, we're not gonna charge all these.
The other thing, I think you were out, hey, possibly, but uh the guy that's gonna be over our account.
The business, yeah, the government guy.
Yeah, he's government services, yeah, he's very.
I like.
Well, let's just take a motion on. We're giving motion for. I'm motioning to switch count with the people's bank.
I'll second that. I don't know.
Date's coming hard.
Okay.
Like I would say immediately, because that's CD, that CD matures in two days.
Well, and on that, we probably need to take out good savings.
Yeah.
So then you re.
You wanna make a sec- separate motion for that?
Probably need to finish this one.
Yeah, let's finish, yeah, others in favor, sorry.
For People's Bank.
Okay, and last, to change to a People's Bank, a hundred percent, everything, everything.
Uh we cannot do everything.
All the bank accounts.
Because we have some, I see either, it's not mature, right?
Well, here's the thing, one of the things we did talk, sorry, jogged under me, one of the other things we talked to him about was, you know, we're right now in three banks. We're in West Bank with Community Trust, Central Bank, and we even talked to him about the credit cards, the credit cards the departments have. That needs to be brought over to to People's Bank, we need to quit being, so many banks, our port clerk has to keep looking at all these different bank statements, have different login.
I say we move everything to People's, but we do have one CD.
See, that we can't.
You know, say it.
Here's a positive trick to tell you about, that People's Bank actually get down on the street and quit books too.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
That's how I do it.
That's every account that we own, right, so if we have one pretty uh ABC and one for.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, they'll all still have the same account.
Yeah. Um.
It's too late, we already motioned it.
No, I, yeah, I vote. Um with, oh, I was gonna say, with that, I guess talk to their bankers and maybe tell us how to transition better than People's Bank. But just after something me and Joe learned today, before we officially switch, we need the clerk to log in and print off.
Everything.
Everything, that way we got it for what you're gonna talk about later.
Yeah, but but just to be clear, we motioned to move everything that we can move to People's Bank minus that CD.
Yeah, so that would be, the West Bank that's available, uh CD that's available, the credit cards, we need to talk to people about getting them switched over there.
They should be willing more than walking the helpless.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, actually, the Navy.
Yeah.
Well, well, no, well, what happened on that, so we're gonna cash it, what we gotta do, since that's done its path, it's all about the West Bank now. Dell's dead because it's matured, we got two days left, we'll cash it out and put it in savings.
And then we can put it in a CD we get.
Or we can invest it.
Yeah.
And you know, something else to look at too, is um in the meantime, while we're doing all that, we can look and see what actually would be the penalty. Are we just gonna lose a hundred dollars, what we made in the two year CD over Community Trust, it's, you know, whatever, bring that over and put it into saving. And yeah, that way the next commission's dying, like, oh god, where's our money, and it seems checked until and deposited until.
I agree, you want to make my.
Well, I'd just say, if we look into see what the penalty is, I'll let y'all know.
Yeah, on the other CD.
On the other CD.
So this one, it comes to David Tunes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Um yeah.
So we have to motion on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion and we cash out the West Banko, uh forty five thousand two hundred sixty six dollars and twenty one cents. Uh out of s- out of the CD into a savings account, I don't know which one, but.
Oh, savings.
And we'll put that in savings until we get people squared away. And possibly take that back out.
I'll second that. Others in favor? Alright. Um I guess we already got the update on the. Better stamp machine and credit card.
You'll update.
Know what I'm saying?
Tape.
Um. Insoleration of KU, if you know.
Um so recently, when we went out, Terry and all of us uh. Recount how many street lights we had out, we had about sixteen out, and I don't think they're all fixed yet, if y'all see one that's not fixed. Please let me know, I'm gonna have to call and see where they're at on. Um. Basically getting. It fixed.
Do you know if the two at the square ever got fixed?
Do not, the one at the square is flashing, so if we had a kid with a BB gun, that would help us a lot, but uh they won't replace.
The other guy with the arrows.
They won't replace one if it's like. Um but the two back here on the. The the two back here, the one that's on the flag and the one for the park, they are, like, they come all to pick it out, and that's what scares me, is they came here, they go out, so.
Are they on a test to dawn or timer or something?
They.
Actually, talking about this, since that light goes out, she told me to bring up to him, getting that, like a fly pole locked, right?
Yeah.
Maybe the lock on the fly back there, so.
This is how I think. So, what's any law?
That's true.
And storage is all the same, west storage.
So, so when we get to talking, I can um consolidate, you can take the KU as well. We have, how many counts?
Twelve.
Twelve accounts, each account at minimum charges you forty dollars. So what what I'm asking is basically, um I want. Somebody to reach out with, maybe streets or whoever, you, I don't care, somebody that knows uh kind of what's going on. We need to try to consolidate the best of our ability. And um so like, the storage built behind here, um me and Terry went around and looked at all the active meters, we had used two point, zero point two kilowatts in two years.
Yeah, nothing.
Why are we paying forty dollars a month for?
For the solar panel.
So, what Terry told me to do, and you all know Terry, um he said basically you can do some kind of a stop for a year and. If you decide that you, you know, after that year old up here, I can put the meter back on and um. You would have to have it re-inspected, put the meter back in, that's the problem that I do see, but uh as of right now. You know, if you disconnected. I mean, we're gonna save that money for, well, just on that.
Now the storage building out here.
Yeah.
That's supposed to be the reason now?
Yeah, it's forty, forty nine dollars is what we paid last night, last month.
That's just a meter fee, but.
That was meter fee. Uh I think it, we've had two months that it used point four or point one in the water. Yeah, we need to do something about that.
So, I don't mind looking into it, cause one thing I'd like to say here is, I still don't understand, like all the school lights in town.
All the way?
The school caution lights in town.
Yeah.
And Georgetown, and Georgetown, and all the ones out in the counts, who's paying for those? No, no, I mean, Eastern, who's paying for Easterns out there? But I'd like to find out if school system paying for all these others, why aren't they paying the ones down here?
I will uh, I will say that we need to keep the pavilion separate, like that's smart choice.
And fire needs to be separate, because there would be a way to figure out how much they're using, they use a lot more electricity.
We have two separate street lighting accounts, basically, I guess is what this.
Yeah, there's two rather still, and then they're.
Somebody just needs to sit down and like, really consolidate.
Now that wants to be not about the street lights and.
One of them you have seventy nine. One of them has seventy nine street lights on and there's like a dozen.
That's two on.
Sure, two that are even. Yeah, um. I don't know if K U would consolidate all of ours. Like, we just hope. Also.
On that note. When we were looking into the repeater and figuring out what it was, I can pay support and all that stuff, um. I did briefly ask a gentleman, like, the school flashers, can we not put those on one bill? And he said, because they're different majors.
That's right.
Can. However, I heard her asking.
I would, on the school lights, if we're gonna get stuck with them, I think we should go solely.
Well, and this will, I honestly, I mean, John and I was looking into it. We're gonna.
It is a question. And if we just do one and do another one next year, well, will we do them all at once? But uh we have, the problem is we have to have a certified, state certified electrician. Is that you? Oh. Oh.
He's.
Yeah, so that's a problem that we're gonna run into. Um, but I think we could probably try to rank for that or something.
And you know, even if they're pricey, we've already paid for these for forty years. I mean, we've been paying the past forty years and.
Did you, you really want to look into it?
Yeah, me and. I'll finish your round and do something. I'll try to try to figure out who pays for it.
There, that is that all of them, thirteen? That's all the candidates. Come on that front there.
Yeah.
It's not that it's gonna be fixed. It's not gonna save us all the money, but we're nickel and dime ourselves over lights and meters. You know, they can help us, please.
Yeah, I was gonna say too, whenever I reached out over the solar panels, the, they gave me a s- a list of state certified. Like people that we could use.
So.
Yeah.
You can only use. Uh, once you're talking about grants, I know only first started this commission back in. Save your money. I've worked on finding somebody to do a grant rider. Uh, it's my pay house soon.
Uh. Our eyes burnt out.
Yeah, uh, so we we need help with writing grants. And um just give us.
I think the grant station has resources for that, great.
I am not familiar with it, but I can look at.
Just the kind of you can look back. Well, this is like, hey, how we out here? We don't own it. We don't maintain it. We don't do nothing.
Permission.
Flow system. We don't maintain it. We don't do nothing with it, but yet we have to provide street lights for caution to schools incessantly, whatever. And we paid three meters separately for all three of those lights. And it's the. Something we've been doing. We've been doing it for a while. But it kinda, we found it in our budget meetings when we were getting kind of tight on money.
Was that to? Yeah, but we we would like to pursue grants and.
Or.
Parks and rec, uh improvements of downtown, uh street funding, uh pretty much everything you see up here.
Just send us all over.
Yes.
And if you want to log into the main grant station, not just the one you see in the public view.
Yeah, I I've logged in.
That's got pages after.
Pages and pages, but probably.
Like.
On a lot of those grants, it's a hundred fifty percent match.
Yes.
You know, you know, we gave you ten thousand, but you gotta pay that amount.
Yeah, we. Those would be hard to do, yeah.
Uh.
That's all I have on that. That's, I just wanted to bring that up.
So the light for your house, that's one of the new bulbs.
Then call me out. Hey, I can't remember. They did mine first.
No, 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 no. I was just saying, that is.
Did not choose that.
Coming, coming on, coming on from church or like always got to the night, that's the first time in my chair I could actually see the sidewalk.
Well, I was, I was talking.
Because that light, but as soon as I got past it.
But there's a lot.
The parking's been open, so I couldn't see from past. It's the first time I've ever seen the sidewalk, sidewalk for the college.
I could call John. John kind of agreed with me. I don't feel like they put out much light.
It's four direction, a board direction.
And that's straight, straight at the road, like you're saying.
Point straight to sidewalk. Yeah, great. I mean.
Are those lights gonna be cheaper to operate?
Yes.
Yes, I would like you, but the thing is, they're powered. They will not do the whole city. Until they, you know, one burns out, another one burns out, another one.
Yeah.
Well, we can get that kid with beating up. Thank you for doing that that way.
Well, you know, change, even if I find that red rider.
Oh, I appreciate. One of those lights that the player is out and the other one is cycling.
When you go down the hill on the one to right there.
I know, so I gotta talk to you.
And the room is fitted and high, but it's still there.
I'd like to report to see how many we actually did.
I appreciate that, you know, I'm a bit bad.
And that was just kind of, we're hot wings coming up. We were trying to get on top of it, you know, without giving it any of those. Oh, I have one there, kitchen.
Property tax, do you know something? So Guts now has the property tax information from the P V A, so they've been calculating everything. The only thing they have left to calculate and put on the tax cards is the debit. And typically ours would say, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, um, two percent discount if paid by November first. I believe we need to change that to the second first because by the time, you know, they normally have October to pay before November first, so I feel like we need to give them a month. And it's gonna be at least another week before guts. Gets unprinted and gets mailed out, so. Um, she wanted to say December first instead of November first.
It's not ordered. It's that's not an order, or ordinance, bound is it? Yeah, I'm trying to say.
No.
I'm just making sure with all your ordinance and you've got their name.
These are data.
Right, thanks.
I don't remember.
There's a feature. Thanks, Tuesday. I'm gonna be January first. Please, sir, it is uh. Very. There's really much.
Say something. It does, which I'm gonna show, so it's not November first, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was gonna ordinance it stated.
Yeah, it's in there.
Oh, so we have to do it, so it was.
So I don't have to stay that way. There you go.
Uh, we're gonna skip the next one, still the next one.
There you are. We have the second reading, reading of the ordinance reselling one fifteen Mulberry Street.
Mayor Commissioner, this is a summary of an ordinance related changing the zone for certain real property owned by Empire Investments LLC. Consisting of approximately zero point one four acres situated at the corner of Main Street and Mulberry Street, standing ground sky county Kentucky. This ordinance amends the Georgetown Sky County zoning ordinance to reflect change in the zoning classification. For that certain property owned by Empire Investments LLC, protected limited liability companies. Consisting of approximately zero point one four acres. Situated at the corner of Main Street, Mulberry Street, standing ground, Sky County Kentucky, four oh three seven nine. From commercial B one to residential R one B. A copy of the full ordinance may be obtained at standing ground city hall, and this is the second reading.
I'll motion it. To pass the. As long as nobody has no opinion.
The doctor, yes.
Yeah. Anybody have any opinions?
No.
Certain questions over there.
Oh, okay.
Um, get motion, I'll motion the.
Yeah, I'll second you.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Hold on, it's done here.
Um.
Everybody did the same.
Yeah, you know, some infrastructure, they'll be.
So I've fallen and spoke to the lady that sends the letter to her. Uh, basically, I don't. Best way to describe it, everybody remembers a J G went, we're commercials. So basically, here's how that works. You get a big settlement. Company comes in and buys it and it's pay you your money upfront of a lump sum. That's all this is. Um, if we had active um. Um.
Leases.
Leases and things like that, they would come in and buy that lease. You know, there's another eighty thousand dollars in lease, they'd probably give you a third, they'd give you. Twenty two point five on top of that. Um, so that's all that was. And when I told her what we had currently, she wasn't interested. She said. Well, except for I told her, you know, we still have twenty five years to lease on that.
Yeah.
And so she was interested if we sign a more long term uh leases on there. And she said, we call back. You can maybe. Figure for something early on and let them buy us out quick, you know, and then they would just take over the lease. It would definitely be something. Also on that tower, sure that would have to be run through Georgetown, because they still have interest and ownership of it, but yeah.
Um CPA, R F P and Park R F P. I don't have the one C. Um, I'll.
Oh. Uh, before we move to the other one, we did get one for the CPA.
Tell me.
It was our existable.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
So you sent the email, like you sent the email from. He was.
And so I think, you know, you know, we put it out unless that we wanna actually put it in the paper. I think we're kind of bound.
We just go with her.
Go with her.
And what was the amount? Was it just because God, it's the same, she's not raising her price or anything? It's coming down.
I I, I mean, we can, we can put it out for bid. I only in the paper, but.
I reached out to the two CPAs directly, uh, well, people said about bank brothers.
I don't know what else to do. I'm, I'm, whatever, I'm. I I'm. I really don't know what to do.
And if, you know, if we do that, are we still gonna talk about the one down there below for?
Yeah. So we're good with that? Do we need to vote on that?
I think, look, you might have sent out a new contract, right?
Yeah, I think there should be a contract, right?
I just wanted to publicly say that we did not give them the, we did get all previous.
And then I would pass for the grant sent your contract.
And the office over.
That's right.
Excellent.
I want to do that. Tell her the sentence.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now to the clerk.
All right.
Clark, we have.
Alright.
Oh, the applications. Yeah, we have um, um. Four candidates that we can look at. Um, we have two background checks. That's our one full background check right now back and we're still leaving me the other ones. And there was another one that had an issue with that, talked to attorney about today, so we'll get on that one. Um, but that's where we're at on that, just. Uh, one people that did apply dropped out, um, and just because she was actively seeking a job, she she found one, she took it. Um. But we're. So probably four, you bring two, yeah. We're done with three.
Four, four.
Hopefully four. There's another one still out there.
In big, we haven't received it.
I just, I thought, yeah, we haven't seen that patient yet. They, and that was totally on me. Um, that individual had emailed and they used a secure encryption site. You know, it says you gotta log in, get your one time out, which to me is kind of impressive, they use that.
Yeah.
But when uh we got the application ready to send out, I had all those saved and I'm actually sent the application back to the encryption site. LPTN dot net and then. Found out that that person was inquiring about the application process. I'm like, well, we didn't get one from you. I'm like, oh, I looked back and I saw I sent the application to the wrong. So I resent that to her and we're waiting on that one to come back. Um. But that's where we're at.
So maybe by next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um. Park and what R F Ps and surveyor?
Um, alright, here we go. It's funny, let's do a survey first. Let's get that one out there. So um after uh. Rob gave me um the individual number that was taken over Joel Day's surveying, reached out to him, contacted him. More than welcome to do uh our survey. I've been going back and forth, um. Long story short. He is basically anything, he's doing all Joel's surveys, finishing them out. And I told him that I hadn't been talking to him. We hadn't really had a price or nothing. He says, give me a price, sending a message back today that basically he would not charge the city to do this. Um, one thing that he is doing any surveys that he is completing for Joel's, he is literally writing check, having them write the check to Joel's.
Same.
Um, so with that being said. He said, I will be glad to do your two lines because I asked for two lines, um.
Does that over here or basically?
Back here. So it's, it's basically the one over and one down, um. He will not give me a price.
We need to come out with a price.
I know what we approved, um. There is also that same topic kind of deal. I would uh like the city, since Joel was, what, what, let me back there, let me fill in a little bit. Joel did this one over here for free. That's the way. You're not gonna charge me, you're gonna charge me for this. And I told Zach that he had done that and he's like, uh, you know, like, he did it. Okay, okay. So I almost want to have a ver- into today. And I'm gonna pay for it out of economic development, you know, and put Joel Day, just so they'll, I, I don't know how, you know. I don't, I still want to. If he, if we're gonna pay, you know, Joel, like, still with this back here.
It says more is, he was gonna, he was.
I I I'm just, this was a proposal. I'm not saying that, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, he did it for free and now he's no longer here and I, I can, you know, tell him thank you, uh, you know. And it's, but back here, if y'all were willing to come up with a number, I can't even take it on the truth calls.
What is it that we approved?
It's.
Two thousand?
Up to two thousand.
How much?
No, we proved up to two hundred and thirty. Uh, well, we might have jumped to two at the end. I don't necessarily know if remarking is a full survey like that.
Yeah, true.
So I don't know. I can't, he would not give me a price. So I don't know what to do there. As long as you're all are okay with it, um, I'll let him survey it and I will try to squeeze a number out of him. And uh maybe we can pay her in for his word. I will like to, whatever we do, um. And let's say if we charge three hundred dollars, if you charge, we give three hundred dollars, whatever it be. I would also like, since he's doing it for free, cover his business license. Um, since he's doing it for free. So I'm, when he comes here, I'm gonna have him get a business license. And as long as you got it approved, you can take it out of the economic development because it's a lot of time.
Wait.
Get, get me one, raise your voice just like. His business license.
I make a motion.
For this year. Um, we'll make. We'll go ahead and do that, I think.
I'll second that.
And he comes in here. Hey. All the favor, yeah. I don't know his last name. Zach, uh.
Heath.
Heath.
Heath. H E A T H.
H E A T. It definitely, he never told him.
Really?
He's a really nice guy and um young guy. He's, he's got a good, and he wants to just let y'all know, and I'm not promoting in any way, but if y'all need anything. Would you mind?
I got a farm. You can go be ready.
So. Very.
Very. Don't.
I talked to several, he's here, did all the shows.
Yeah.
That that was the one.
So. As long as you're all okay with it, then we'll tell them we can move forward and then potentially pay may not go to him, so it's gonna look a little weird. Um, if he doesn't want to accept the money, he may have to write it to another. Person, but.
Barry, I ask him just to give us a brief.
I have tried.
Well, I mean, if you squeeze the number out of him.
I I've tried.
Wants us to pay it.
He said, I'll do it for free. And that's in writing on.
Maybe you tell him to give you a number on paper, but for her.
I'd write that too. And he said, well, whatever, so he's willing to do that. I'm, I'm telling you, he's a very nice guy.
We. Has to be paying to him, but he can direct us directly.
He will not take it. He will not take it. So I, I, I don't know what to do here, guys. Yeah, he's.
Yeah.
He's nice enough, he's, yeah, he's sick stuff. He's stubborn. He would not give me. So, you know, I, I could tell him whenever he wants. I mean, the problem is, is he's no longer, Joel's no longer here, so that is stated, like you were saying, a business is no longer practicing. Uh, well, I'm just saying, we, we can write a check to his grandmother, but we need it in writing from him.
Uh, directing it to her. So, so.
I'll ask that, uh, I'll, I'll ask that, say, hey, look, we gotta, you know, we gotta have a number, we gotta have who it's going to.
It'd just be an invoice and say make payable to, and let her name down there.
Yeah. Um, but I won't tell him to move forward with that. Um, Michelle, they've given me a bunch of paperwork. I'd like to ask if I can, um, she says I have to, uh, I want this back. Uh, but I would almost like to, like, you give him copies?
Yes, please.
He might already have it, but, um. If, if, when he comes in here giving copies of this, maybe then. So, some good stuff here. All right, um. All of, we all been waiting for the parking lot RFPs, you all have, um, the contract or the bids in front of you. Uh, you have the request for the high usage gravel parking lot. That, uh, Zach had drafted up, giving the guidelines and everything else that he had said for. We had three contractors, uh, one put in one bid, one put in another bid, and then the third contractor put three individual bids in on their own. I had sent this out to you a week ago so that we could, uh, go ahead and start looking at and maybe potentially, uh, get one of these, uh, bids, get them going, get them started. Um. Do we legally have to stage them out?
These are requests for proposals.
They're all private bids.
Yeah, these aren't bids.
They're.
In general, this request for proposal, there's a difference.
Well, good. Question, you have an answer?
No.
Okay.
Uh, spot.
Um, the thing that I'm looking forward is, uh, hopefully y'all had, you know, reviewed it. What is your thoughts and who would you like to go to? Kind of tried to send it out a little earlier in case you wanted to contact somebody. Um, but.
There are no, I, I, I like.
I don't know it publicly.
I like the Moles.
So which one? He's the one of the three.
I like the Moles ninety-five hundred.
Ninety-five hundred. Okay. Um, is anybody else?
I, I, I kinda like.
You like the, there is a problem, not necessarily, but there was one that bid for concrete. And that is the, the third one on Mr. Moles's bid. And we did not ask for that, but he got an offer to throw it out there for us. Uh.
Concrete will last longer than that.
Yeah. It's gonna fall on me. And, uh, what kind of scares me was with the water, I don't know. You know, I'm, I, I'm not opposed of the concrete. So, uh, I'm gonna give a little backdate on Moles, by the way. He contacted, uh, the prior person that actually dug that building up and put, put the, whatever back in it, and, uh, he said that was already a con- uh, parking lot. And he said, so there's gravel down there.
And it's, the only thing I'll say is when we were thoroughly talking about this, we said, let's make a gravel lot in the day.
Yeah.
And I think if we go with asphalt or concrete, they have a certain overstepping to start.
One thing that I want to, just one thing I want to mention that there's, uh, every one of them said, said, well, you're gonna have problems with keeping your gravel in. Cause we're talking, you know, it's, it may be that, but, yeah.
You know, I'd go ahead and be the bad guy. I like concrete. I just like the durability. I mean, look at the price, nineteen thousand, your concrete.
It's five inches thick, by the way, on any bitch. Wire mesh. Uh, he will.
I did twenty years of that concrete, you're looking at the city actually only capitalized nine hundred and fifty dollars.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean.
I will tell you, the thing that I'm worried about is the water runoff, and I had a discussion with him about the water runoff. Basically, I would want it.
He has a slope in it.
Slope it in, so it's gonna go straight down, it could creep back in.
Right.
Um, salt is a concern. So if we put concrete down, we probably will have to make a ban.
Yeah, seal it every so often.
Seal it, um, what if it snows? A couple of years. I don't know what we do there necessarily, gravel, I don't know. I guess we put up a part to the risk.
What if we continue having very nice Christmas markets and other things down here?
Yeah.
We have a place that can park all year round, your rock, it's snowed and ice is gone, you can't use it.
Uh, uh, concrete plus the gravel. It's, uh, the bid is to actually extract, uh, excavation, ex- exclamation.
That's amazing.
Check out the top four layers of, uh, topsoil or whatever's there, all the extra, if we anything below service, service, uh.
Is this a quote?
Uh?
Is this a quote?
Yes, I don't see where you're saying where you.
It's on the.
Let me admit it, say, hold on.
It's right here, on the second page on the inside.
I'm sorry.
The top.
Oh, okay.
I tell you what, that is the most professional bid I've.
Oh, yeah, I like.
Well, I, I like this company.
Plus he put it as insurance.
I'm telling you.
I mean, I like that.
I, I like this company a lot. Um, there's one that I really, you know, I appreciate it, but I don't know if we're necessarily gonna.
Sorry, Rob, that was pretty in five inches of four thousand.
Yeah.
Mix. Was wired.
So he's gonna call back the area, prep the con- uh, prep the concrete, five inches thick, wire mesh, concrete, grades towards the center, and third one was on the roadside, so. Uh, try, I guess, try to help get on.
All the water runoff and everything.
Yeah. Fiber, fiber mesh with four thousand mix and then clean and cut up the concrete.
Imagine that, he lives here, speaking. Yeah.
But it's, it's a separate, great price.
Yeah.
I had a thing of sidewalk, you don't stop there now, I don't know. Yeah. And I, you know, he was a fellow, uh, a past commissioner.
Yes.
So, so I think that's kind of, you know, he knows. It's just that we didn't ask for concrete, you know. And. I like, um, I had talked with Zach about this, and he said that he wrote in this contract where we could throw all, all the.
We don't have to accept it.
We don't have to accept it.
Yeah.
We could accept this. Is what I, is that correct, Zach? You think so?
I mean, that's what I wrote in there, that you can reject all of the RFPs outright and start over. I mean.
Just reject the rock ones and accept the concrete, agree to it.
Sorry for the concrete.
Yeah, I haven't been paid for it, so.
Yeah.
My concern is about ten thousand dollars more than I'm, you know, we originally thought.
Cause Commissioner Brown just pointed out.
We just gonna let it rocks. And I do think that, you know, where we got extra money from, just for, I think it's money lost spent for the city. But it's also something that we absolutely didn't want to at all.
So. But Commissioner Brown's pointed out, this one, a very detailed one, you don't have any doubt what he's charging us for.
Yeah.
And his, what he's charging us for is three thousand dollars more than the concrete from rock. I mean, so, any digital, if you put that in.
I'm, I mean, I was gonna say, you could even reach out to this company right here and ask them what they've charged for concrete, just to see what their. Costs would be.
Yeah, and the one thing that I don't like is it doesn't tell you how big it is on the concrete that.
He didn't say.
But, uh, he was kind of underneath the impression that when I was talking to him, it's a sixty for sixty base, was what we were looking at, but. Um, clarification, you know, I have to read.
Would we want to buy one or not?
I'd say, you know. He didn't put it on any of them. And then none of them actually did. None of them did.
I'm gonna say, do we wanna hold off, like, we do it till next meeting and then?
I think that he's just saying the parking lots that's there that we've discussed. You know?
It, um.
I say we bid on it. I did not hurt it.
Twenty.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Not that I can recall, they'll probably be pretty important, looking there, well. And, uh, I would just. It's a four to same.
Pretty much. So.
Uh, he already has a business license. Yeah. Listen, I say that we, we can, we can vote contingency of the size.
Yeah.
And if it's not what we think it is, sixty-sixty is what I'm thinking.
And you know, I know this. I think weird thing, but in my mind, I'm thinking also estimate loose here, and yeah, you gave me what you asked for, but he's also saying as a citizen.
Have to put up with it in a thoughtful sense, yeah.
And as a citizen, he's saying, I think we do better on the.
Or migrant.
So, well, financially, or, or is this something that we're willing to take out general funds? Well, we didn't budget for it. We know it's gonna be a, this amount of the deficit towards our general fund, and we need to, you know, basically.
Yeah.
We are New Zealanders, watch that budget, because we're eating some of that extra money we have.
I think that it's spending it responsibly, because look at the issues we've had with parking.
I'll be honest with you. This is, I mean, I, it may not be your ultimate fee, you know, yeah. But I haven't made a single complaint since we removed those two signs.
Oh, I, I would, um, maybe just something to think about, um, and it does affect me, cause I've got power. But if we do that big lot down there, and a lot of people are off shooting, parking over there, maybe another handicap up here, just because if you're in a mountain chair, you're not gonna get a bike.
Well.
Yeah. You know, you'll park back there and get.
Something, something to think about also. That, that's a hill there, and later on, this was gonna be in the, this isn't part of that bid or nothing or anything, but I want to put like, a post and the chains up to direct them away from pulling up the hill, people walking up the hill. And be more directing towards the way they came in. And it's just kind of like saying, hey, don't go this way.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Safety.
You know, but that's gonna be later on, and it's probably gonna be the time when we, we talk about putting up, uh, parking, uh, concrete stops. Those people don't hate buildings or whatever.
Oh, which in change, I mean.
So it sounds like that. I, I think we.
It's gonna be, you tap down the driveway and then.
Yeah, that whole thing is gonna be open on that side.
Are we gonna put lawns in there?
So I think that's something that later on discussions, best utilize or how do we think we can best utilize this piece of property? Um, I think we should think lines on there. I think we can probably get seven to ten spots if we, if, you know. We also gotta take consideration, it's not a freaking big truck. I said, are you gonna put parking meters in there? You know, it's, uh, gotta pay that extra pin down.
You know, one thing I'll consider though, if there's a pole there, we should get.
Give it.
Our, when we and, uh, Commissioner Brown talked to KU, we'll see what, talk to their light on that pole.
Yeah, basically, we, we have one in the back back here.
Twelve thousand dollars you hear.
We have one.
Out, probably.
We have one back here by the jail, that basically.
That's how it is like.
Yeah, one thing I do concern is, is we have, uh, two poles right here at the front. And what it is, is what I hear is they're waiting.
Over and done.
Uh, now we got a. Uh, utilities, not KU, but.
Davis, uh.
Internet or whatever, fiber is on that pole, they're waiting on them to come and remove it, put it on the other pole, and it's never been done.
That's.
Um.
As long as we got money, I'm probably.
That's, that's what I'm trying to stress.
I was gonna say, I, I, I'm the only concern that I have is that I don't know how much is in there. So I will be voting for something, having no idea how much is in the general fund. About a hundred and ninety.
But question.
Do we have, so we have recurring, anything coming from that? We're getting ready to get insurance strikes and the franchise case.
Question, um. And you have stated out loud, but I know a couple of you know the exact amount. What we budgeted, there was two different from the county. Whatever we really got, is that overage enough to say we can take a third of that, or whatever it takes to pay this firm? The, the overage, and we weren't expecting, so we budgeted pretty tight, and if we're long, we stay within that or near.
I believe it's seventy-four thousand dollars over.
Okay, so it's, that's about, you know.
And then.
About thirty.
That's roughly what.
Under thirty.
Four hundred, I remember. Is that? So.
I hope not.
It's a hit, right? You know, we're, we're sitting here talking about how, you know, that's what scared me more than anything, we're talking about how broke we are, our budget and everything else, we had all these meetings, and we're gonna.
Right at twenty-five percent, that's all it is.
Yeah.
It's an order.
I also don't wanna be like, oh, look at them down there spending money left and right. It is a problem.
But we're not spending on a four-year contract piece of equipment, we're spending on something that should last twenty, thirty years, I mean. I mean, church, the front part of that church, that was forty-five years before we had to replace it. And it was only three, it's just, this is gonna be four or five.
Let's take a vote on who to use. And, uh.
I like Moles probably free.
So what we, I guess, uh, if anybody has any other one, we'll look after that. I guess, I don't know how to do that, is that, we're gonna, because somebody needs to make a motion, I'll get it.
Does you wanna read it?
I'd say it's.
I'm also, that means set the Moles quote free to put a ground, uh, concrete lot in over here.
Um.
At the old.
As long as it's sixty by sixty, or what we had talked about.
Contingent fines connect.
As long as the quote does not go dark. Yeah.
I'll second that.
When he could pre- yourself, it would be charging that, so that's why I'm trying to say it, but.
Yeah.
It needs that.
Yeah, we have to meet our specifications.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're not.
That's a good point, say, I would put that in motion, to meet our specifications that we were requesting.
We're, we're about, we're about any contingencies. So when that building got tore down, I know there was big holes. If there wasn't a lot of backfill, we'd have put in that problem.
Yeah, yeah.
And he talked to the guy, and he said it was backfilled, and it was a parking lot once before, it's been filled up with a lot of ground.
Remember the back being flat?
Yeah.
At one time with gravel, cause. People are hard on you. Can't think of his name, I know, but he used to park back there a lot, when, when they ran water up in the other.
Mm-hmm.
But when they filled, when they tore that building down, a lot of that went into that hole.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of what it might have been. So I, I will go a little bit back, back, uh, I'm, I'm gonna check your contingencies on that. Yeah, he, he gave three quotes, and one of them was at nine thousand dollars, and that was literally all in four inches of the topsoil, put gravel down. And if he hit anything, it stayed there and it just put gravel up. Then he turned around and gave one to meet our requirements that we had asked for, which was remove X amount of, uh, topsoil and, you know, whatever's down there, and it was, uh, eighteen thousand. Dollars.
Rob, to answer kind of your asking, he does have this quote, if we hit anything below surface, cost of excavation could change, so he's thinking of, what if?
That would be modeled, could turn the whole attitude. Gets a big chunk of concrete out of the, of our.
Yeah. The, the what if really needs to have a price tag, so if you're.
Well, I say, and, and you really can't put a price tag on that kind of stuff.
They can put it there, it'd be great.
He put ours, but I'm just.
So we could, uh. You know, it's not something we asked, it was kind of when I was giving it, yeah. Um. I like the idea, uh. And as long as, as long as we stay here in that number, and I would just have them to do this, and I'll do it on that one. So, cause if it takes ten hours of work, more than anybody anticipates, if it's three hundred and fifty an hour, it's thirty-five. Yeah. We need another.
And, and, but Zach had. Except the quote for, that's contract, he wanted to propose one.
All right. So, uh, y'all were writing a contract if we accept the.
Well, it's, yeah.
And then I'll, I'll be in contact and tell you what he says.
Yeah. And that's, yeah, Zach for my, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Did we finish our, uh?
No.
No, I was in favor. You know, it's kind of, you're right, right? It worked, you know, we're good with this. Yeah. And, yeah, it's. Moles construction, part three, so, so plug in every time. Yeah.
Contentions.
Park three, quote, I don't. First, we're, if there are a concrete lot contingent to our specifications. Drop. Alright.
All right, uh, thanks.
Summer removal?
I, um, do we, can I ask one more question? That contract, do we have to have it, um, read in front of everybody, or can, once you all come up with it, can Jennifer have it and he can start?
But technically, it needs to be approved by the official. And as you want to make a separate motion authorizing, the mayor to sign a contract with Moles as prepared on approval type gives you. We, that's a few things, something about it.
I'm ready, I was getting.
I hope.
I, I'll actually, I was gonna ask about that today.
Sorry.
It's, I should relate, if you have. Do we have the snow removal and the hard things?
I don't have, and so, uh, nobody really responded to the RFPs, but, but I do have two people, like, I talked to Royce today, and I talked to, uh, Shane Hason. Both of them are interested, and I told them to get me a, um, like, contract filled out before our next meeting.
Okay.
And we can decide to go with, and everything we want then.
Okay. Um.
All right.
You want your Halloween card?
No.
Not, well.
We got somebody in here.
Okay. Forensic audit.
How are you doing? We need your help.
Me?
Yeah. We're hoping that K L C can go this in a direction, we have a forensic audit.
Yes. How are you doing?
Uh, we have had, kind of, thrown it out there, we can't be really, no.
We haven't had much traction on it.
We haven't put a bid up, technically we're already be up with that, but um. We would like some guys.
Still getting five year.
Um.
I would say at least.
I thought we talked about two, uh, mayor time.
Oh, sorry, eight years.
Okay, but I don't know if we can go, I don't know how much of that we will actually have.
We just say five to eight years.
Yes, that way you should be trying to find.
And uh.
I can connect you with the person at K L C.
Uh, either Dale or whoever.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll connect all three of y'all.
Well, two, more than, more than two to four of them, so just.
Oh, yeah.
Pick two and send them to you.
We much appreciate that.
Yeah, got you.
Total growth. Yes. Alright, right, not least Halloween.
Halloween. Is it really?
Yeah.
Well, um.
Don't say you're my man.
So you all got it in your email, I had brought it for you all about requesting shutdowns, Main Street. Well, look us forward to Seabrook, now, I wanted to bring this one last final time, before we.
I do have uh, problems.
Well, I think we all have problems, and that's why we're doing, we're uh, uh, even John does, and um. I wanna bring this to you, I did as we requested, we got through Michelle Hill, and um, here it is. We have it.
Yes.
But I wanna discuss it before we, I didn't consider anything about it out or anything. Because there are concerns, and then.
Yes.
But I'll open the floor to anybody that has concerns, I will say this much, before we get started. I did reach out to Mike, Michael, uh, Mike uh. He said he would be more welcome to let us use his roadside to display the, a message saying that the streets would be closed during Halloween for two hours.
Yes, cause it has to be done so many days before.
So he is a hundred percent backing, I forgot to call until John there, but John, me and John had talked, and he said, oh, we'll be here sometime.
Think, when we were talking to him about it.
It doesn't actually state that, any?
No, but if you call that guy, he'll tell you, if it's over a certain amount of time, um, you have to give advance service.
And, so we do have that, but before I call him, I had, I had talked to John about this, I just want everybody's last opinion. Before we either do it or we don't.
I, I like, I like that you reached out to Henigan, but. I'd say I like this, because I live at the death axis of.
Yeah.
People come flying down through there, and don't care about kids, and they slam on the brakes, and, and I love this idea, and. And, and at some point, we need to think about our kids, our safety, and that's a great move, I appreciate it. I would probably just say with Henigan, he is, we've been able to borrow signs and for it, and it disappears, cause they have to have it for emergency things. So maybe look out to a company that was renting like the aircraft days, they do in Georgetown, that we could rent for sure, for a couple of days, to make sure it's out.
I do know we have to move on this, if we're gonna do it. We got less than two, two, three weeks, or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, that's kind of what scares me. I, I, to be honest with you, I just sent it out there, hoping it'd be approved.
I'm glad you.
And, you know, we all sat here and said, if we don't try and something happen, we feel awful, well, we got it, yeah. We need to stop with it, or don't.
I, I would say another thing on this, I hope we try it, if we try it, I hope it's a test run, cause I think it's a legacy with the Christmas, Christmas market. We could do the same thing, Christmas market, really have this like a hallmark down here, and.
All that to you.
Even just for a couple of hours, but.
I will, I don't know if this individual wants to speak up or not, but I did have one concern, um, in the aspect of, you know. What happens to people that don't get here before the road is shut down?
That was me. Well, because my, the reason that I said, like, my only concern with it is, is that you have people that are coming to stuff like Georgetown, or you have people coming to the country, right? If you work a nine to five, and then you come, and you try to get your kid ready, and try to get him here, if you don't make it by six, you know, where you park.
That was what I was getting. Uh, you wanna give up our backyard? Like a park, at the park?
There you go, yeah.
Uh, but that's a long way around, and I, I, I've thought about this, and, and I will tell you my response to Megan was, uh, they better hear my six, we're not my problem. Cause we displayed it for, and I was being smart though, but, um, I really started putting some thought behind it, and I didn't tell them this, but um. You know, I have, she is a hundred percent right, I work a nine to five too, and we're pushing. I think everybody's gonna come down, two twenty-seven, they're gonna drop their kids off in front of your house, and they're gonna roll out, now they got kids. Not being supervised, or whatever.
They're not like rolling with their kid, they're like, do I look at the road, do I watch my kid?
Yeah, I understand that, and.
You know, I'm not supervised, I know I'm ancient, even though I wasn't allowed there more to, unlike somebody thinks, but. We weren't supervised.
Yeah.
I've been till eight to twelve, they let us go.
Blocked either.
No, but we were dodging traffic, yeah.
You know, really, the only people that really affects this, and this is something I asked John, by the way, what's your, I'd like to hear your opinion.
It's the parking thing, because for the last three years, I've basically set up right there in front of Buffalo Square. And watched traffic come in, out of the school, that they parked there, and stay there for twenty or thirty minutes, and they leave you. How are we gonna show that? Parking lot, I mean.
Well, like, a couple of my neighbors are like, they go to Georgetown, but they only wanna trick or treating in Georgetown for an hour, and they wanna come back. And they won't be able to get in.
Yeah, um, there was a topic that, uh, was probably that we lessen the actual.
The actual close.
Close part of it, and what we were looking at is, I think from Woodlake. They can come out of Woodlake and go down to the dollar store, and then the other one, to the other spot, or the. No, they said this, they said the school entrance.
Is that bus entering?
The bus entrance, the first bus entrance.
On that leave and.
And then, just from Woodlake to. Thing is, is to the bus garage, or to the bus exit lane, problem is, is we didn't put that in order.
Yeah. I mean.
I put a, I mean, I've, I've tossed it around, and I really, I really, really would like to try, and I do think we're gonna have problems, and people are gonna be like, I couldn't get in and out.
But you know, you give them, you give them advance notice, several.
That's why I did that, go ahead and advertise it, because we, we have to realize that all of us sitting here are gonna be responsible if something doesn't go. But I, I think about the people that have children, and they just wanna come over and work.
Yeah, and, and, you know.
It's a Friday afternoon, by the way.
And to be honest, our is irresponsible, we said official trick or treating, that's official action in the commission, we already said that in January, we're our responsibility, why not make it as safe as possible?
Yeah, there, there's no other, there's no other way to access the town, it's uh, this way, and this way. Streets back here, unless you drive thirty mile. But you, you can come down Woodlake and get into everything, all the people that cannot get to. And all the people that cannot get to their houses, the people that live on Main Street.
In inventory, yeah.
Or back on the, uh, behind the grocery store, or everything down through it. And it is part of your business, but there is a lot of people that do live on Main Street, that have side roads on the backside, that can get to it, like everybody on this side. Uh, but once you start getting up next to past Jennifer, it kind of stops, and, um. You know, and I had talked to John about, hey, if you show your I D, can you show where you live? Go to your house, drive along it.
You know, you have a golf cart, you could shuttle them.
So you and I, we drive seventy-five, sixty-four.
Yeah.
And how many times, I, you might be better, because you've been driving for decades, I've been driving for three years going to work, and there are many times, I'll see signs for three weeks. Shut this down, and I just don't even, it's my fault. Yeah, I do, I cuss, when I get there and realize, oh crap, they got this today. But I gotta go somewhere else, and I just, you know.
But it's your fault if you get home from work at seven fifteen every day, and now all of a sudden, you can't go home, you know? Yeah, and that, that's. This is why I wanted in front of all of them, cause we had to be okay with.
If you work Monday through Fridays, two hundred and sixty days a year, going to work, if you get upset over two hours, we're trying to be safe for our kids, and visiting kids, I mean.
John, John, what is, what is your thought? Cause you're gonna be the one that's gonna be the ring leader.
It's gonna be an issue, I can already see various different things coming up, and, um. And you can, I can't do, I can't be on both ends at the same time, so I'm gonna have to.
Reach out.
Reach out to Sheriff, I already have, yeah, um, just to Don, he said he'd be happy to come and help, that's kinda, I'm gonna let Jeremy know. Um, but. It's gonna be difficult to base to make everybody happy, and I've been doing this for thirty-eight years, and really, there's no way to make everybody happy.
There's no way to do that.
So it's just enough, have to be. You guys tell me what you want done, and you're gonna be done.
Best one is your.
I mean, we.
Yeah, I just think of your opinion.
We've gone camping in campgrounds, and they shut the campground down, the loops, and they've had issues, just shutting campground, the, the campground. I can only imagine how.
I don't know, counting most two twenty-seven today, and they were parents, I had to get to the middle school, like me and each of them, chill, you hurry up and wait. It's a long road.
You know, on the, on the converse, I don't think it's what Ms. Cogan meant, but on the converse of that, yeah, nobody else does it. You know, we always talk about, we don't have anything really doing, you know, Commissioner Brown seemed great, because there's something we've finally done for community members. Was it for everybody in the community? No, that's for a handful of select people. And as would this be, if you're parents, you wanna be able to say, you know, if my kid gets ahead of me, and I can't see him, cause it's dark, I don't have to worry, cause there's not gonna be a car coming two or eighty miles an hour down Main Street.
Yeah, I love it, I love the thought. And yes, it is an inconvenience.
They did shut down Pike Street this year, I saw their.
They did, you're right.
I mean, like, I was letting you know that I had multiple people share that with kids, they did.
And that's a big deal, it's a state holiday.
I thought that was a great idea. And I've got a lot of headaches when you go shut down a state road, cause you gotta remember, it's just not this community here, it's that community over there.
But you know. I feel like the state probably weighs this too. And they did approve it.
Yeah, they did approve it. Cody comes dancing down the street, and it's.
Yeah.
I even reached out, you know, to the businesses that were gonna be open, and he said, hey, we're gonna shut down two hours, you know, this could affect you. Almost all of us, but that's great, I do.
So, cause most of our businesses are happy to see the kids.
And may, maybe.
As I was gonna say, I'm for it, it's just, John's gonna take the brunt.
Yeah.
He is.
Yeah, yeah, we got support on it, I mean, yeah.
I think maybe we just really, really promote it from this point forward. So it's. So it's not a shock to me.
What do you mean by advertise?
If you're gonna shut it down. Yeah, give these people having sat down a way to get around, so they wanna go out. And hit Graves Road, and go down to his hometown, and come back out to Little. They need to do something like that.
So that makes me think, question on that, so should a sign actually be back, or do ball, to tell them, hey, Main Street shut down this day? Do ball is a way around, could you go out, go Graves Pike, come back down?
I think you just say, please detour.
Yeah.
It's your best route. Is we should probably back it up, even though we have the permit, we back it up to Woodlake, people can come down, Woodlake can go. Hey, that's a, that's a important one.
This is where a lot of the kids are, but.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, do, I think for two hours, I think.
I think.
You know, on top of getting the word out about we're gonna do it, let's get the word out so people have their lights on, so they have their candy out, let's make it a reason, maybe it works a while to do this, I mean. I just.
When's we get two officers, John, if we ask Jeremy for two officers and John?
That's what I think.
Because that way they can man the main entrances, cause one thing that I really concerned me is like, there's an emergency, well, we gotta have somebody there.
Well, the permit, the permit says, we have to be able to allow them to go through for mercy at any time, so yeah, that's our in the permit, we have, that's our intention, and. You know, think about, if you were, almost room housing behind you, if I'm a family, and I'm looking, so, I don't know about this, whatever they are now, three hundred thousand dollar house. And I researched them, and it says, they shut down Main Street for our kids, I'd be like, I'm gonna buy a house here, don't scare me, they care about kids, I'm.
Alright.
I didn't think we'd get a vote on it.
I didn't think you'd get it, so congratulations.
Do you wanna take a vote on it?
I think, I think I understand, I think we should take a vote on it.
Okay, good, did it, did it. I'll make a motion that we shut Main Street down, um, from six to eight, from. Sebring to.
It's whatever.
Whatever. Again, it's where. We're gonna shut it down, so whatever is on the encroachment permit, from six to eight P O on Halloween.
With that.
With advertisement.
I'll say.
All those in favor?
And the one, one meeting.
It's, it, it has its questions, I have my questions, I mean, I think it, it's worth it to, to try it and see, I mean. The only way you know how the community feels about it is when we hear in the community of, about what we did.
Uh, can I, can I, listen, can we do something else since we're here? Can we waive any business, business license that may want to set up for Halloween in Buffalo Square?
I like the cough, like the hot chocolate person.
I don't care who it is, I, I haven't. This was just in case something pops up.
I would, I would just. Family for you, like.
Yeah, and, and, I'm not saying, I'm, I'm like, if somebody's coming, wants to food or whatever, I would.
You know who I'd love to get out here?
The reason I ask this, is cause I don't think, a lot of people are gonna miss Halloween with their family, and so that's why I'm not like, hey, come on. But if somebody does.
Yeah, I, I have a question, just real quick on the police aspect, um. I assume, they helped out a lot this past weekend, they did that just on their own, just as county helping you? Is there anywhere in the future, like, if we could pay an officer to? Or just like if he was able to arrange, and could the city pay for the overtime? Well, no, I'm just saying, I mean, he could be outnumbered at night.
I agree with.
I say anyways.
From him, for one fifty, I guess I need to fill it out for you, for myself.
Y'all wanna make a motion, or is that something y'all own, or vendors? Uh, at Halloween, set up the square.
Well, I could put it this way, half of it, our police sergeant gonna be busy, might be able to force anything.
Well, but if we shut something like the, with the Christmas vendor, like how. People selling, like, we'll.
I'm just, I'm just saying, if somebody asks.
I'm, I'm down, let's, let's make a vote.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I'll make a motion, waive uh, business license between all Halloween day vendors.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to the motion, that it be family appropriate, like no DVD vendors, no outdoor vendors?
I don't think that's legal in here, as. Cause.
Well, you're saying anybody, so if you could make that motion, any business could set up, right?
Okay, so just make it any family friendly.
Any, well, I mean, who should say we ain't family friendly? That's right, well, listen. I don't know, I just, I don't have any idea, maybe we shouldn't even entertain, I was just trying to see if somebody was gonna set up for hot chocolate or something.
Okay, guys, I appreciate y'all doing that, but in a way, I feel kind of offended, cause every time you turn around, y'all are letting people come in here and set up and make money. But I gotta pay a business license every year, and, so Jerry Lee. Feels fired in that way a little bit, cause he don't get a break on any of that. We, we have.
Never gotten a break as far as the business licenses, on none of that stuff, so, I'm just.
That just concerns me, that you keep doing that, but just keep pounding people for business license, business license, business license.
But it's only for.
For one day.
We can wait here for two hours.
Wait mine for a whole year. But it's only if we're done.
Yeah, pick them up.
They're gonna make more than that if they come here and set up, they will.
How, how about, how about the motion is if they come to Michelle and get business license, they're more like, more than happy to use Buffalo Square? Or Main Streets in Tavish.
I say we just don't do it right now. I just, it was just a thought, um, I think it's a good gesture, because I don't consider it lightly, you know, but you're gonna make your businesses that you do have here. A little smaller. Well, the problem is, we don't have food businesses here, we're working on it, and I see what you're going in the future.
Yeah.
And I understand that aspect, but it's right now, I'm just trying to get people down here to eat. Uh, I'm just that, that too. And that's kind of where it's, it's my.
Twice, I've heard that brought up tonight. Play the business license, play the business license.
The business license. I'd say, it's up to you guys, y'all, it was just a suggestion, we don't have to carry on. But your motion to dismiss it.
But the business license, it's only been, so.
Well, it's just for that one day.
Yeah.
And if they come back the next day, they have their business.
Do we have, uh, do we have like a special event license?
Well, it's no difference, it's no difference in the like foreign market. I, I understand what Rob's saying, fully.
Oh, you hadn't figured about it, it's.
There's one license for the whole year. I understand that, but you can't get, I'm telling you, that's kind of when, when you're looking at the revenue cabinet. It does not matter about business license, if you, if you did business, and they come down here, and they saw transactions and stamping ground, and they're sitting there swiping it forward, guess what? They go back after you on back taxes, and they say, hey, you want the Stanford grant, you know, you're. And that's kind of the whole gist of why we're trying to go that route, and also, what are we, what are we gonna do when we go through the revenue cabinet? We don't have that ability to tell them that they can, cannot do that. We'll be doing that, or we'll be asking. We'll be doing that, we're gonna be asking.
So maybe, you know, maybe instead of waiving some business license fee. Maybe the business license fee is probably no certain measure paid for.
I say we don't rule them. I think we're gonna have a lot of, we're gonna have a lot of. New things happening anyway if we're shutting down Main Street, so. I say we don't, I say we just don't allow vendors.
No, I think we allow vendors, but they just.
If you're gonna, talking about doing this on Halloween, what about Christmas? Are you not gonna do the same way?
We can, we can literally turn that into Christmas, we just gotta change the dates.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think this is a good driver for that and I think Christmas would be great to put on, then go across Mulberry. Maybe at Mulberry back around, where we can shut off this portion in that way. You know, the ladies wanna do that.
We only have one for the Christmas parade, I mean, we have to send off, we've always got that.
For Main Street?
For Christmas parade.
Yeah, but the parade permit, that's why we're like, they told me, uh, thirty minutes, you don't have to advertise or anything, because it's not gonna be shut down for state.
But if there's somebody who has an emergency or needs to get home for, like their medicine or whether that's older, just to do things, you can get them through.
Last thing, uh, they sent this out, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you my opinion as a business. On the economic, the government side, I know it's bad, but you boys are wrong on this. I don't feel uh that it's.
I have a question, is this the one we see the, this is the one they put in all the hotels there?
Hmm, I think that's just two times they print that out.
A little like, you can go Bundy jump thing, all of that.
Uh, I'm not for it.
Oh, that's a big, it was a big thing.
Yeah, I'm not for it. I mean, we're devoted, I'm a good board. Y'all turn it out, I mean, that's, that's true, but yeah, that's, I'm, I'm, but I'm saying I'm voting out, yeah.
I thought I'd known before we got here.